Good evening, everybody. I apologize for the delay. It is 7:07, and at this point, I would call the public hearing to order. The public hearing for tonight is regarding a local law establishing an interim successor. Just a very brief background on the interim successor appointment is an appointment by the mayor without approval of the village board of trustees. In the event the mayor and/or deputy mayor are unable to execute our responsibilities and/or duties, the village must have someone in place to act in our stead. And tonight, I will ask the village board to consider a resolution authorizing the adoption by the village board of trustees of the village of Tivoli of Local Law Number 17 of 2014 to enact a new article in Chapter 44 of the Village Code entitled Continuity of Government. This village has seen two hurricanes, an earthquake. We have seen far too many fatalities here at the intersection as well as the riverfront in 2011. In the event that the mayor and/or deputy mayor are not here, the village needs someone in charge to declare a state of emergency, to direct department heads to address certain situations, and/or interact with our fire department and rescue squad, as well as Dutchess County Emergency Response and other agencies. That being said, is there any comment this evening on establishing an interim successor for the village of Tivoli?
Is there a natural progression between the trustees?
No, it's a good question. No.
You shouldn't sit together.
No, if this resolution passes tonight by the village board, it is my intent to appoint trustee Robin Bruno to serve as the first interim successor for the village. And Robin, trustee Bruno would be vested with all the authorities of the mayor to act in my stead until either myself or the deputy mayor are able to get back to execute our responsibilities. This is a local law. The local law must be filed with the New York State Secretary of State. And as soon as this adopt, as soon as this resolution is adopted, it is my intent to announce the appointment of trustee Bruno as interim successor. Is there anything further from the public? Seeing none, at this point, entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Motion's been made by the deputy mayor and seconded by trustee Schneider. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. This public hearing is closed. Okay. It is now 7:10, I'm sorry. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance so we open our November Board meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item on the agenda this evening is a clerk's report. Clerk Enel?
The clerk's office sold 440 garbage cans for free payrolls. We attended a planning board meeting, a ZBA meeting, and we returned unpaid property taxes to the county. We also have a holiday coming up on the 27th and the 28th for Thanksgiving.
And we will be closed the day after Thanksgiving. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a minutes from the previous meeting and the workshop. At this point, entertain a motion to accept both sets of minutes. Motion's been made by trustee Schneider and seconded by the deputy mayor. Is there any discussion? I would like to, just for the record, trustee, this is my, trustee Israiti was present for the workshop but absent for the vote that took place at that workshop. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the schedule of upcoming events. Anything from the clerk? Anything from trustee Bruno?
Yes, interest.
The date?
December 13th. It will take place over at the Firehouse from 3:00 to 5:00. There'll be a craft fair in the Firehouse Bayes from 12:00 to 4:00. Vendors are wanted. Anyone's interested in participating in the craft fair, by all means, you can contact me through the clerk's office. We'll have some open tables for those that wish to participate. So part of the event, Mr. Hanson and those fantastic Blackbird trucks will be back again this year. Horse and wagon rides, 3:30 to 4:30 p.m. There'll be a bonfire, visits with Santa. We're working on someone to drive Santa around the village, I believe, Mr. Chrissy.
There's only about three of you that will drive that truck, so I'm just saying. Claude Potts being one.
And we're also in the midst right now of planning that some of the middle school students in the chorus will come and carol in the Firehouse along with on the wagon rides to get some people celebrating into the holiday spirit and singing carols, arts and crafts, refreshments. Tree lighting will be at 5:00 p.m. But also what not to be missed is going to be the library's having a special event as well on the third floor. We're having different sorts of swaps with books and other items. So they're going to be involved on the third floor. We'll have our event over at the Firehouse.
We would ask if anybody would like to volunteer your time or services that day. We're always looking for folks to help us out that day. We could always use some extra hands.
Absolutely.
Are there, is there a fee for a craft vendor at this event?
Twenty dollars.
Want to take it for twenty bucks?
Twenty bucks.
Thank you.
Pretty good rate?
It is compared to what other ones that I've been doing.
Yes, thank you. Treasurer's report, clerk Enel?
In the general fund, we paid out $64,899.33. Water fund, we paid $77,7, I'm sorry, $949.36. Sewer fund was $23,899.96. The capital fund was $698.10, and the charitable trust was $31.26, for a total of $167,478.1.
I would note that there are two large payments. One is paying off the Woodmark Well, Woody Neese/Mark Malinero Well. That was a grand total of $208,000. And the KVS Financial Software that we purchased, I think in 2011?
Yes.
$25,000, and those are both being paid off. At this point, entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? You also see, I mentioned this to the board, there's also a large payment to Morris Associates in there for elevator work, for their engineering work. That was paid out of a bond that we took out for the village building, which included roof repair, elevator repair, and there will be some other repairs in there. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We've had an opportunity to review the treasurer's report. Now we need to authorize payment of the bills. So our motion to approve this month's payments. Motion's been made by trustee Schneider and whispered by deputy mayor Griffith. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Do we know if trustee Israiti forwarded on a zoning report, or did the zoning enforcement officer forward a report?
I do not know.
Nothing in correspondence?
Is there anything in your vote? The deputy clerk's issued a vote.
Oh, well then. Yeah, yes, thank you. She did. It looks to me like there were some inspections that were conducted by the zoning enforcement officers, and most of them look, well, the two only mentioned that are electrical. The rest simply say final, so we don't know what they are. But there were six inspections conducted and all state that they were, state that they were passed. And there were, it looks like these are our permits that were given out for a garage, a rehab residential, a wood stove, and a miscellaneous. It looks like total fees collected on that was $405, so I apologize. I didn't realize that was in there.
And one event here.
Go ahead.
And just one event from the code enforcement officer. Someone had electrical boxes put on someone else's property. So that is something that they'll be straightening out, I'm sure.
Right. Yeah. Central Hudson came up and actually installed electrical boxes on another person's property, much to the dismay of the property owner. Thank you very much. There's no correspondence. Moving on to regular business, before I do that, at this point, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow the public to address the board on agenda items only. Motion's been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Are there any comments from the public on agenda items only? I will say to you, agenda item number five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to discontinue the zoning enforcement contract with the town of Red Hook is being tabled tonight, but we will talk about that. My guess is that we will bring that back for a vote, we believe, in probably two months. Let me just discuss that very quickly. It was my intention tonight to ask the board of trustees to authorize me to suspend the current contract that we have with the town of Red Hook pertaining to zoning enforcement. To say that I have been displeased by the service this village is receiving by the town of Red Hook with regards to zoning is an understatement. For three years, both myself and the deputy mayor and the board of trustees have sent numerous communications and have sat with the town officials to express really what we want from a zoning enforcement officer. And that is a proactive approach. While there have been some improvements, it is my opinion, and I'll let the board speak for themselves, it is my opinion, there is not enough. There are several instances when you drive around the village that you see are nothing but complete violations. There is a property here that borders our park that a year and a half ago I addressed with our zoning enforcement officer that is yet to be addressed. There is another property here across the street from the village hall. I addressed that about a year and a half ago. That was ignored, and we had a fire in a structure over there. That is unacceptable to me. There is a building in the development, a garage or garage or an addition that has had paper peeling off of it because construction was starting and was never completed. That is unacceptable to me. There is a structure here across the street that used to have a pool on it. That is against state zoning codes. There is a church in the village of Tivoli that has boarded up windows. That is against zoning codes. I am at the point now to pull this contract. I think we have given the town of Red Hook far too many chances. We could simply pull the contract tonight, but what we as a board decided to do is that we want to wait a little bit so that we as a board can start to interview applicants and that we have somebody on board so that when there, it is an infraction that needs to be addressed, we'll have somebody in-house. But we want the board to be able to actually sit down and interview potential applicants. To just go ahead and appoint somebody is not the way we want to do it. We want to see what this particular zoning enforcement officer could do for us, and we'll go from there. But as recent as September, this board sent a letter to the town of Red Hook expressing our desires, and it's my opinion that that letter was ignored. The deputy mayor and I sat down with our zoning enforcement officer three years ago and asked for a proactive approach. That has been ignored. We have residents in this room who have gone to the zoning enforcement officer and zoning department and have asked for certain things. They have been ignored. So I sit here somewhat embarrassed that we've allowed this to go on for far too long. I'm the mayor. I take responsibility for it. And, but at some point, you have to make a decision, and it is my decision to ask the board for their support in allowing me to do that. But we want to make sure that we have someone in place to address these situations. But when we have businesses coming to us and we have residents coming to us, talking, I had a resident come to me who moved out of the village about 15 years ago. She came back and said to me, "What happened? Why are you allowing this, this, and that to happen?" To me, that speaks volumes, and we've allowed it to go on far too long, and the time has come. So that item is being pulled, but we will table it, and I will assure you, we'll be back probably in two months, which I believe will give the village board ample time to interview, to interview applicants. That being said, since it's on the agenda, I would be more than welcome to hear your inputs on that or any other agenda item. Karen Cleveland?
Thank you. Thank you. We know I could be saying the same thing you've said for three years. And I think that it bothers me to look around the town and see so many violations. It's my village, it's your village, it's our village, and people need to take pride in what they have by abiding by our zoning. So thank you.
We have given, as I said, I think we've given many chances to the zoning enforcement officer, and we've been told this, this, and that was going to happen, and it did not. And so we're taking the action positive, it shouldn't have been taken a while ago. We believed what we were told and what we read, and unfortunately, it did not come to base up.
You really need someone in the village to be proactive. It's so difficult to be reactive.
Any other comments?
I'd just like to agree with Karen about, if we're going to be discontinuing the contract, it's really important that it be an actual local person, you know, who has a vested interest in the community. And because Tivoli is so special and has, you know, sort of special considerations, you just need to preserve that and not, you know, pull from far afield in looking.
Thanks, Emily. Peter, no, hold on, let's get comments first. Go ahead.
As you guys know, of course, I've been addressing this issue for a while as well. I was opposed to the original move to go into a shared services agreement with Red Hook. We all predicted basically that exactly this was going to happen. And so, I mean, I agree with Emily and Karen. I think that we need to have somebody here in the village. I think the idea of privatizing the whole endeavor to somebody who's 20 miles away is, you know, maybe digging a hole deeper than the one we're already in, quite honestly. I mean, one of the, one of the problems that we have here is not so much, sorry, I have too many thoughts going on trying to compete, but one of the problems here, it seems to me, people talk about, you know, Steve not being on the ball or Bob not being on the ball. Quite honestly, at the end of the day, they're employees of the town of Red Hook, and they're going to do what their boss tells them to do, right? So I think we need to be very careful not to demonize the employees. Every single interaction that I've had with either Steve or Bob has been fantastic. They've been great personally, and they've been very helpful. They're responsive actually when we do call. The problem is, at the end of the day, if they're not given the hours to take care of the work of the entire town of Red Hook plus Tivoli, I'm fairly certain that not only were hours not added to their payrolls for this, but if I remember correctly, hours were actually taken away in the budget from their offices relatively soon after we entered into a shared services agreement. I could be wrong on that.
I don't know.
And I think that, I think that it should be investigated. But at the end of the day, we have to be very careful not to demonize Steve and Bob because, because honestly, it's about, it's about you and about Red Hook. If Red Hook is unwilling to tell their employees to do their jobs, then that's something that we have to take up with Red Hook. And I know that you have. I know that you have. But, but somehow, it's got to be made to stick.
And it was ignored, obviously.
Obviously, it was ignored. So again, I'm very concerned about the idea of privatizing it out to some company some other place. I know that this person has worked in Tivoli in the past. I just think it's going to be going even further, and I just worry that we're actually going to get even less, and honestly, that it's actually going to end up costing us more. One of the main arguments originally proffered for the shared services was that we were going to be having, retaining the same level of service while saving money. Neither of those things were true. Neither of those things were true from the very beginning. We did not save any money. It was the exact same price, if I remember correctly.
And then our rate was bumped up.
And then it was bumped up. And we don't have the services that we had with Steve. And I don't want to go back to Steve. We're not going back to Steve.
No.
That's not going to happen. But I think that a situation similar to that is much more in the interest of the village than it is to just give it away to some, some other person who's even further away than Red Hook, right? So what if this person that we enter into a contract with, what if they bump up their rates even more after two years, right? We're already kind of stuck with them. And if they're less responsive?
Well, the board hasn't, just, just for the record, the board has not made any decision yet because we haven't even, I mean, we've had a presentation. Yeah, I just might right now.
And you'd be very, very careful about doing that because honestly, it's the easy way out, right? It's easy to just say, okay, let's ditch these guys because we're unsatisfied with what they're doing. So instead of getting into a big confrontation with Red Hook and actually forcing them to do what they should do, I mean, have you, have you had a lawyer look at it? I mean, have you threatened any kind of action against Red Hook?
We have a current.
To comply with the, with the contract?
Well, we have a current contract with the town of Red Hook that was drafted by our attorney, which also happens to be the same attorney.
But has anyone actually gone to say, hey, listen, you guys are in breach of our contract. Why isn't anything being done? I mean, again, it seems to be the easy way out to just go to some god that's, you know,
Well, the verbiage is pretty clear.
That's where yours have known.
The, the verbiage in the contract is very clear as to what is expected, and this should not come as a surprise to any of the town council members and/or the supervisor and/or the zoning officers themselves. But, yeah, we are.
Again, I don't think it's the zoning officers that are the problem.
No, I'm just saying.
I think their bosses are the, are the problem. I think the issue is we're paying Red Hook for a service. Red Hook, not Bob and Steve, but Red Hook is not providing the service that we're paying for. And again, I feel very strongly about not going after Bob and Steve.
And this is not a personal attack against Bob or Steve. My reservation is not with Bob or Steve. My, my reservation, and I can't speak for my colleagues, my reservation is with service we're receiving from the town of Red Hook as a whole.
Which is, which is, which is poor. And I'm not, I'm not an apologist for Red Hook. I'm also concerned to be changed in the process pretty dramatically back when we went into the shared services agreement with them. It's, it's disruptive, I think, to keep changing things and to keep having to learn how to work with a whole new set of rules, a whole new personality. I think that while it would be a little bit more difficult and make a little bit more work, I think it might be worth trying to explore honestly, the idea of trying to repair our relationship on this level with Red Hook. And on a connected note, I think that this should also be very, very, very clearly a cautionary tale when considering moving forward with further shared services agreements. If we go into a shared service agreement with Red Hook over the highway department, which is something that has been discussed, I, why are they going to be any different with the highway department than they are with zoning and building?
And Peter, I can tell you, we started meeting with the town of Red Hook last, was it the winter? Has it been almost a year that we've been?
February.
Yeah. So it's been almost a year. And I will tell you that the issue that comes up regularly is the village's displeasure with the current contract that we have. So the town already knows with us going into these meetings.
The town is still cashing our checks.
I know. But just so you know, we've already brought that up. And just so everybody knows as well, when these consultants make a recommendation, we as a village board can take that recommendation and say we accept it, or we can, we can reject it.
Or we could also try a little bit more forcefully to get the people with whom we have a contract actually onto the contract that we have instead of just going and cashing the check and doing nothing.
I want, thank you, Peter. Any other?
Haven't you done that?
I'm sorry?
Haven't you done that?
Well, we, I mean, I, you know, shy of putting a billboard up to the town of Red Hook to just express our displeasure. I mean, there's been meetings, there's been letters, there's been face-to-face. I don't know what else, really what else we can do. There's been articles in the newspaper about it. So this, none of this tonight, anything that I'm saying, and later I'll let the board talk about this, and I don't want to dominate this conversation, but none of this should come as a surprise to anybody.
Well, how does our, does our village attorney feel that there might be recourse from a legal perspective?
Our village attorney isn't able to comment on this matter.
And nor should she. This is a village board issue.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious if we actually really pursued all the options or if we're just being pissed off.
No, and I'm aware of what's in the contract and what our responsibility is with regards to dates and timing, so on and so forth. Well, I would not do anything to put the village in jeopardy with regards to, I mean, every contract that I sign is reviewed by the village attorney, and I know what's in the contract that would allow us to discontinue.
Here's another question, just as an alternative.
Go ahead, and I want to get somebody else.
Just sort of a random thought that just occurred to me. What about hiring the existing guys on a part-time basis outside of Red Hook so that it's, it's a, it's a second position? I mean, this is just a possibility.
Yeah, I think we're going to look at.
If they're in an office here and actually in town instead of having to find the time away from town of Red Hook business to drive over here and, and figure this stuff out, it's just another option.
I think we'll look at all, but that's something we'd say.
But I think that's what we're largely interested in, is having a person who's physically present here.
Yeah.
They may not have to live here, but they need to be available here for local people to access.
I don't think anybody's in disagreement with that right now. Any other comments?
Well, not just to be here, but to follow through on what the violations are. I mean, clearly, you're stating, you know, you have made reference to different violations that the zoning officers have been made aware of, but they're not following up on. So whoever the person is, you need to get somebody who takes the zoning laws seriously and, and follow up seriously.
And, and, and the follow-up has to be done, and the enforcement has to be done, and when we're told that weekly reviews are going to be done, and we're going to get a weekly report, which is what our understanding was back in November, and that isn't being done, and if the weekly reviews are being done, how are they missing so many violations? That's, you know, an obvious concern to us as well, so.
That's what I mean. I mean, something we've talked a lot about is that it shouldn't be up to necessarily residents or board members or the clerk or other people to identify a violation, right? That's, this, this office is supposed to be doing that so that, you know, because we have other things to be doing, and so do you. And that was, you know, I think a couple of years ago, you know, we didn't, a couple of years, a couple of months ago in September, we were really talking about, how many strikes have there been, you know?
Two and a half.
Two and a half. You know, we're really getting close here. So we got pretty clear, and it's a very good discussion on the board about, we wanted proactive, you know, find these things without someone having to let you know they're there. That's your job to find them. And then, you know, swift action and, and follow through and make sure that that violation went away, was resolved, and not have to have the board or anyone else check in at every one of those stages and make sure it's happening because, because there are, we have other responsibilities, right? And that's what you're, you know, paying this person to do. And those, we were pretty clear about those three desires we had.
Which we did have received a response to, though.
I don't think we saw a written response, but I also don't see it out in the streets.
Right.
And again, clearly, just to be clear, I don't think that we're getting what we're paying for, but I, I might.
Especially when our rate was raised.
And, but I might disagree on the solution being, being offered.
I interrupted you before. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
All I was going to say, Pete, I think that's a fair suggestion. I think that this board has looked at opportunities and ways that we can resolve the issue with the town of Red Hook before we take actions such as terminating a contract. What Joel referenced before was, you know, the board's decision to lay out our expectations very clearly and then give a definitive timeframe for those expectations to be met. But again, you have to wonder how many opportunities you can provide before you need to take more decisive action. We have to weigh everyone's input. The past few months have seen a higher attendance at board meetings, and, you know, we look out there, and it's really exciting, but we know it's because there's some, there's some concern with, and zoning has been a consistent topic of conversation. I also think that this shouldn't necessarily be wholly negative. There have been a lot of suggestions that have come from the conversations, such as having someone who is immediately accessible with dedicated hours in our village hall. And this may just be an opportunity to see some of those changes occur that would make residents and merchants, businesses in the area able to access our zoning enforcement officer more readily. So, you know, I appreciate your input, and I think that we are all keeping all of the options open. I think that that was also one of the motivating factors behind the decision to table that resolution until we have a new course of action that's immediately, you know, we're ready to move forward on. So I don't think that there's any reason we wouldn't consider outsourcing it. I think the quality is more of an issue. But if we could find someone who were a little farther away and yet maybe had a larger staff that could respond in a timely manner, I mean, as it stands right now, with the town of Red Hook, you know very well that if we have a call at 2:00 a.m., our current zoning enforcement officer is not going to come here at 2:00 a.m. on Saturday.
But our old one did. Just to, just to, just to twist that one again, I mean, we actually did have a pretty fantastic setup before, and.
Understood.
I'm just very concerned that we're going to dig ourselves even deeper.
Yeah, and I can understand that. There are some other individuals that have not been interviewed by the board. I know we did have one meeting with an individual that we're all kind of dancing around here 20 miles away. But we do have some folks who are closer. But we do have some folks who are closer and residents locally that are being considered. And actually, we've already reached out to them to have them come to us to discuss any opportunity in that regard, so.
Any other comments before we move on?
I'm just.
Go ahead. Did you have your hand up, Emily?
No.
Okay.
Just as long as we have recourse, you know, like whatever happens going forward. I mean, we're in a situation, you know, when we have a contract, but apparently that doesn't mean anything. Or we can't, we can't, you know, we have lack of recourse, we can't recourse.
Well, I think we've all learned a lesson as to what that, with the verbiage in that. I think when it was written, it was written very well. The problem is that the contracts only work when both sides are following the contract. So the contract is very black and white and clear. The issue is that we're not receiving what was in the contract.
So then I would like to second what Pete said about going forward with Red Hook in terms of shared services.
And I don't think anybody here disagrees with that. We've talked about it in every meeting.
I promise you, pretty much every shared services committee meeting that comes up, the existing IMA and our dissatisfaction with the status of it is presented as a concern and something that would keep this highway shared services project from moving forward. It has a, it has a bigger impact, I think, than it is given credit for, so.
I just wanted to sort of do an overview, just that we do all share in the disappointment. And, you know, we live here and we see things that are going on. And to have enforcement that is being effective, but then also having that in conjunction with, our deputy mayor has formulated all of these committees that has focused with individuals focusing on beautification of the village and plantings. And so what he has done in connection with having enforcement, I think we would then all be just so much happier having Tivoli back to the way that it was and why we're all here.
Yeah, it's getting, you know, it's, there are many pieces to taking pride in the appearance of the village and that, you know, things are working and things are maintained. And, you know, it's frustrating if you get some nice volunteers and go out and plant a bunch of flowers, but the next property, the mattress has been there for three weeks. It's really hard to, you know.
Whenever you do, don't do anything about Haiti Montgomery going to play for you.
Any other?
Honestly.
I know you're honest. Any other comments? If there are none, I'd like to continue moving on. At this point, entertain a motion. I'm pretty pleased to offer this to the board of trustees. Claude Potts, for those of you that don't know, is probably, not probably, he is the longest-serving firefighter that the village's daily fire department has. Claude continues to be one of the regular attendees at all of our fire calls and is really one of the true village residents that knows this village inside and out. And I don't know, Tommy, you probably know better than I do, how many years Claude's been with the department?
Just at least something years, I could be wrong, a little more than that.
Okay.
I mean, that's something plating gave him.
Yeah. Claude, yeah, Claude continues to give back to this village time and time again. And that being said, at this point, I would entertain a motion to name a stretch of Broadway here in honor of Claude Potts and call this Claude Potts Way. It would start from Pine Street and go to the Firehouse. What I need to do as mayor is I need to send a letter to the Dutchess County Executive, Mark Molinaro, telling him that the board of trustees has authorized us to do this. But I think it would be a fitting tribute to a gentleman who continues to give time and time again to this village. So at this point, entertain a motion to send a letter to the county naming a strip of land on Broadway from Pine Street to the Firehouse, Claude Potts Way. Motion's been made by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and is there any discussion?
Great idea.
I, I'm happy with this one. This is a nice one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll send that letter off to the county tomorrow. The next item on the agenda is the fire contract with the town of Red Hook. I had asked trustee Bruno and trustee Israti to meet with the town council members to discuss our current contract, the next contract with the town of Red Hook with regards to fire protection and amounts. The boards had an opportunity to review it. Do you want to just give a quick summary of situation?
Yeah, certainly. Trustee Israti and I met with Jim Ross and Bill O'Neil. We went through bit by bit the existing contract, went over facts and figures. And one of the biggest fact is that fire protection is huge. We all rely on our fire department for safety, fire, car accidents, boat accidents. So we were able to go through, go through the contract and then come up with an agreement. There was some, some additional funds were allotted. We went through all of the other parts about insurance and so forth. And we came up with an agreement and then we passed it forward.
And so at this point, entertain a motion to authorize me to sign the contract as submitted from the town of Red Hook with regards to fire protection. Motion's been made by trustee Bruno. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Counselor, I believe you've already reviewed the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I was not at the, I don't think I was here at the last board meeting because I was at a meeting with Dutchess County representing the village on shared services, Peter. I looked for you there, but you didn't, you didn't come.
One or five miles.
It was a meeting on shared services as to what services Dutchess County has that we can tap into. We're already, I can tell you, we're already sharing some services with Dutchess County. One being is we found a cheaper way to get all of our paper products, everything from actual copy paper, copiers, paper towels, saw paper tissue, that sort of thing. So we're already tapping into that. We're gonna start looking into the county with regards to getting a cheaper rate with our oil. And maybe next year in the budget, I'd like to talk to the board with regards to phone services that we have. But at that meeting to discuss shared services, we also were informed that the village will receive an $80,000 grant award to do a feasibility study with regards to transferring the water and sewer services over to the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. Before you make comments on that, when I brought this up a few months ago, one of the first concerns that trustee Israti brought up was that, well, the town, I believe she said the town of Red Hook is that, well, the town of Hyde Park went to the Water and Wastewater Authority and the rates automatically went up. What happened is that the Water Authority went in and took a look at the current water and sewer services that the town of Hyde Park had. They identified certain areas that needed to be improved. That's why those rates went up. So it was either the town of Hyde Park at some point was going to raise their rates or the Water Authority was going to raise their rates. Either way, water sewer rates were going to be raised. It was just a matter of who did it. Now, we had four, I believe, water main breaks in a short period of time. The worst occurring in the middle of the winter when it was eight below zero. We have a staff of three. We have equipment that is for a staff of three. We don't have the resources at hand right now to continue fixing water breaks, water leaks, and the infrastructure that we have. This would simply, that being said, this would simply be a study. An independent engineer agreed to by the board of trustees, not me, but by the board of trustees, an independent engineer would come in and do a study to determine whether or not it is feasible and makes sense to transfer our water sewer system over to the Water and Wastewater Authority. The Dutchess County Water Wastewater Authority is a non-for-profit agency. So when they set rates, they set rates so that the water sewer services are provided and that the services are administered and are addressed properly. It is not for them to make a profit. So if the rates, if we were to transfer this over to the Water Authority of Dutchess County, if the rates were to go up, it would, they would go up because the Water Authority felt in their opinion, based on their staff coming in, that the rates needed to go up to address the current situation. Just like the feasibility study that we're doing with the shared services, the independent consultant could say, yes, you should do this. I think it makes sense for you to do it. And we as a board could say, we agree with that. We're gonna accept it or we're going to reject it. Also, you should know, before this village board signs anything, you as a village would have an opportunity to attend public forums. You would have an opportunity to come to public carings. You could even put it up for a vote to determine whether or not you as a village want us to do this. This is not a decision that is simply made in a vacuum by the board of trustees and the mayor. This $80,000 that is in there covers legal costs, it covers the study, and it also covers educational materials so that we would be able to put out documentation to you as residents so you could actually see what services you would be able to obtain through us going with the Water Authority. Again, we could accept it or we could reject it. It's simply a study. It's $80,000. It's not costing the village anything in terms of funding. It's a grant. And again, it would be an independent engineering firm, a consulting firm that would do the study. It's very similar to what is going on right now. We would do public forums and you would have an opportunity to meet with the Water Authority Executive Director as well as their staff to provide information to you. What we as a village board need to do, and as mayor, what I need to do with the village board is to send out RFPs, requests for proposals, to engineering firms. I'd like to see this wrapped up by the middle of January where we have all the proposals are out, we get them back, and that we can come up with an engineering firm probably hopefully by February. But it's not a decision that we want to, we want to rush through, just like the study that we're doing with the town. Peter, did you have your hand up?
Just a quick, just again, I'm not actually 100% opposed to the idea of transferring our water department, but the points that you made in favor of it are not actually, I don't think necessarily in its favor. If it's zero degrees out and there are water main breaks all over the place.
Well, there weren't all over the place. There was one.
No, no, I'm saying that if we contract out to this company to take care of it, they're gonna be dealing with water main breaks all over the region, all over the areas that they're covering. And as far as the water rates going up, I mean, it's a no brainer. Of course, anybody can look around the village and see what's going on and know that the water rates have to go up. In fact, many of us have been arguing for 20 years or more that the water rates should have started going up a long time ago to cover the cost of deferred maintenance, which honestly speaking has been a politically motivated issue.
Well, I don't agree with you on that, but.
Well, you don't think that water rates have sometimes been kept artificially low in order to defer criticism from?
Look, I raised the, this.
I'm not talking about.
No, I know, no, I, no.
Talking about like decades, decades of.
Oh, I don't know what they did.
That obviously the rates need to go up.
They do.
They've needed to go up for a long time, but there hasn't been a little power to actually do what needs to be done, which is to take care of the system that we have.
One of the other issues, when you, they have a large, we would not be shit. In other words, if we were to bring the Water Authority in, we wouldn't be sharing someone that's working down in Beacon or working in Beekman or working in Amenia or Unionville. We would be, we would have our own staff.
So is the staff gonna be larger than what we have now? I mean, I guess my point is if the water rates have to go up anyway, whether we go to a private concern or not, why don't we just raise the water rates and take care of the problem?
Well, this is what the feasibility, I think, study is gonna show us. And they do have more resources, they do have more, look, I think we have one of the best, hold on, hold on, hold on. One at a time. I think we have one of the best water sewer people in Dutchess County in Jim Simmons.
They'd not forbid anything happen, then we're really screwed.
Well, that's the other thing you need to think.
That's an argument actually in terms of having an outside concern.
But what, you know, that being said, Mr. Simmons has been here 30-plus years. He's not going to be here forever and the information and the knowledge that Jim Simmons has is up here. Cody Thayer, who's underneath Jim, is learning every single day. And to Cody's credit, he's had to handle two major water main breaks when Jim was on vacation. We have a great team. We have a great staff. The problem is they're, they're working very thin. They're working with the materials and the equipment that they have. We just want to look to see what's out there and to see if this is gonna work.
Would we be able to keep the same employees?
I was, I was just gonna say that to you. One of the things that came up when Bridget Barclay, who's the director, came to speak to us is that we would not automatically lose, if we, if we were to do this, we would not automatically lose our employees. They could, the Water Authority could hire our employees back as employees of the water, yeah.
Could, not necessarily.
Can I break in here, Pete?
It is something that has happened in other places they oversee.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It is, it is, I mean, there are other scenarios where they've had a system transferred to their authority and then they, you know, the best person to hire is the person who's already working there. That has happened.
Which clearly would be the case here.
Absolutely. I think it's also important not to demonize the Water and Wastewater Authority.
Oh, and I'm not, I'm not 100% opposed. I, again, I very much worry about relinquishing control.
Understood. I think we all.
Because I see the problems that we, that we get ourselves into sometimes.
Absolutely. So I think one of the things that, the reason that came up is because we really all felt that way. So Bridget had given us multiple examples of cases where the Water Authority was appointed to take over a water system and they recognized that the current employees were such a valuable resource that they needed to hire them back. They have the most intimate knowledge of that particular water system and also have an ideal perspective going forward to help them identify the areas that need to be improved. So one of the things that I am excited about in regard to this study is the fact that it will provide a very thorough assessment of our current water system and help us identify all of the myriad weaknesses that we need to address before it becomes overwhelming and can't be repaired, so.
Which is good, which is money well spent.
And it's not our money. It's grant money well spent. So the information that we will glean from the assessment, we can keep that regardless of whether or not we choose to move ahead with a transfer to the Water and Wastewater Authority. So there's a lot of value that can come out of a study such as this and then even be applied if we were to retain ownership of the water system and plan our own improvements from that point on.
Karen, I saw your hand.
I just, quick question. We as a village have usually tried to secure grants to work on everything we do in the village, one being water, if money were available, which obviously hasn't been. The Water Authority being a nonprofit organization, do they have, can they apply for grants as well?
Yes.
As we, as we could?
Yes.
Absolutely.
We've brought that up. They can, but there are certain grants that they can't. But, you know, some that we, as a municipality, has access to a slightly larger pool of grants. There are still grants, but that question has been asked of Bridget when she was here. So it's not that they can't get any grants, but there are a couple that.
But we may be at an advantage being a village?
Sounds like it would be a slight advantage, but then that's only one category in which we'd have an advantage, right?
Tom?
Didn't Rhinebeck just get a million dollar grant something video warden, sir? I think it was Rhinebeck.
I don't know, Tom, I don't know.
I know there's money out there, Phil, because we talked to this Christian Associates who goes after all of these types of grants and stuff like that. And that was one of the things when we put in a fire grant, I mentioned to them about our water system, the fire hydrants. I mean, that's why I just, but the mains are so old and stuff like that. And, you know, the conversation, like, do they have grants out there?
Well, the fact, we've, in, you know, in three years, we've secured $300,000 in grants in just, in just three years. The problem is some of those grants, some of those are matching grants. So you have to put them, you have to match the money. So if they're giving you, say, just on the number, yeah. Is there any other comments on the Water Authority? We don't usually do the dialogue, but we haven't had this group in a while, so I'm okay with this.
Could I have one more thing?
Go ahead.
I think before we get too far ahead of ourselves in terms of what are we gonna do? I mean, we should stop and say, hey, Tivoli just won an $80,000 grant. Congratulations to us, right? That's county money. And we all know our water system is troubled and ailing and we're gonna, we're gonna get to have a really good study done. You know, part of that study is, are we gonna hand it over to this entity? But part of the study is just what is going on under the ground, which is something we all need to know. So I think there's something here that we can all be excited about, regardless of what happens later.
Puts us in a much better position to make that decision.
And we've actually had, this board has brought in several different systems engineers already. We've been contacted by some companies that have heard about our winning this grant and we've had them in and we've talked to them and, you know, we're really doing some research to find out, you know, what we're doing here. And one thing we were told by a company last week is for $80,000, you're gonna get a really good study, so.
Any other comments?
I have one.
Go ahead. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, we were here talking about, you know, with the zoning and people being disappointed. Well, we were here talking about, you know, with the zoning and people being disappointed and studies for water, or studies for highway, and like you just said, you know, hey, Tivoli did get the grant. So I think to step back and everyone, I think all of us here, our hearts and our minds are in the right place. It's move forward, move forward. And I think from a financial standpoint, it's difficult for the board and the village basis. So in order to make decisions that we can move forward, whether it be on our own or with an outside entity, I think all, myself, Trustee Zrady and Trustee Schneider, we, and with residents, need to step back and say, hey, our mayor, our deputy mayor, they're looking to move ahead, but doing it on a wise basis. To say, you know, okay, we're comfortable. We've given zoning a couple of strikes. We're moving. We're doing it right when it comes to the water and shared services for the highway. We're moving along. We're doing it right. Investigating every avenue to make a decision based on knowledge and not just trying to move forward and just go too quickly.
Thank you. Couple more things I just wanna bring up, and then I'll open it up for comments after the board gives their reports. If you haven't seen, the intersection of Broadway, North Orange Montgomery was done. It looks great. Looks really good. We kept the historical feel to it. That really is the gateway to our village and to our business district, and it looks really, really good. And I'm very pleased, and they did it, what, three days, I think?
Three days. And they had to come back and paint on the fourth day.
Sorry. No, Peter. The state of New York did. The state of New York paid for it in CHIPS funding, which is a Community Highway Improvements Program. Before I became mayor, the village really hadn't, had not tapped into its CHIPS money. We had money that was just sitting up there. And we've been going around spending the state of New York's money here at the... There's not doing it the right way, so we'll spend it the right way. But we did the intersection. We've done some other improvements throughout the village. So we've really been using the CHIPS money. We've still got a couple bucks left, I think, to do some minor repairs and projects. But, you know, you get this CHIPS money every year, and it was just sort of sitting there in a pot, and the village was never really tapping it. So what we did is we brought our engineer in, and so the engineer, Joel, went around the village, and we looked at different areas, and we sort of prioritized what projects needed. And it was an agreement amongst the board and myself that that intersection is really what needed the most attention. Those bricks were sinking down. And we had tried to save them, but they were so damaged that we couldn't. So it really looks good. And so we're really happy about it. The next, thanks to Karen Cleveland's suggestion. In the spring, we will have a crosswalk here in front of Village Hall that goes across the street to Pine Street. So when the kids are using the library to cross over to the park, they'll have a crosswalk there. So, once again. So the intersection was done. It looks really good.
I'd like to maybe just add to your story of the Tivoli CHIPS money, because I think Mayor Karana deserves a lot of credit for the fact that I know three, four years ago, when I saw, hey, Tivoli's accumulated, you know, eighty thousand dollars of state money that we're giving, CHIPS money's given out based on your population. And it also says in the fine print, be sure and spend this money. You're not supposed to let it pile up and sit on it, because maybe there'll be some change in Albany and it'll disappear. And so we sort of realized, hey, we need to spend this stuff. And I'm pleased to say, and congratulations to you, like, Tivoli spent their money. We spent twenty thousand of this money
Thank you, Andrew Cuomo.
to get more feet out of our, that sidewalk project that we did a year ago, various places in the village. Some of the CHIPS money went to stretching the linear feet of that. And the lion's share has gone to the four corners, but, you know, it's an achievement that we got that money spent in just a couple of years. So now they can't take it away, because they'd have to come dig up our intersection.
We won't let them. We won't let them. The other issue I wanted to talk about is some recent occurrences that have occurred regarding Bard College. Two months ago, the conversation from the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office to myself and the deputy mayor was that the sheriff's office stopped counting at two hundred students late at night. A month later on Halloween night, Sergeant Pierce off in the Dutchess County Sheriff said to me at about twelve thirty, quarter to one, "Mr. Mayor, we stopped counting at four hundred." There were literally four hundred students walking through Broadway at about twelve thirty at night. I reached out to Leon Botstein, the president of Bard College, the next day, expressed my displeasure, my disappointment, my anger, and the president's response to me was that those are not Bard College students. Well, when those students are getting off of a shuttle that reads Bard College, I don't know whose students they are. Those are Bard College students.
They're not from Harris.
They're not from Harris. No, I'm America. We didn't act like that. But the fact of the matter is, the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, we had to have five cars in the center of the village to control the population. Think about four hundred students plus and what that percentage is with the ratio of our village. It's horrible. It's bad. There's vandalism in the large mat. There was urination. There's people vomiting. There were people breaking glass. And for the college to say to me, those aren't Bard College students, really upset to me, and it's really, I think it's an ignorant comment. With all due respect to the president. However, that being said, we have started a conversation with the college, and I believe the college is committed to improving that. I do think there were two flukes with regards to miscommunications on the college's end with regards to their transportation, and I think that has been rectified. But I think what disappointed me more is that we have made so many strides over the last couple of years to improve the relationship with the college and to really address those concerns that we had with the number of students walking up and down the street. To have it backside was really a disappointment to myself and to the board. But my thanks to the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, they had to call Bard College and have more shuttles be brought in, because they had no place to put these students. There were literally four hundred people in the se... It's like street painting. That's really what it was.
In front of my house.
In front of your house. Think about what street painting looks like. It literally looked like street painting without the chalk.
Why did we take that to Bard? Why didn't we transport them down to the Dutchess County Jail? If they're not students, so they shouldn't have taken them down.
Well...
Because they have fewer houses.
But, so the sheriff's office, much to their credit, they did a great job. We had five or six, at least five, possibly six cars in the center of the village. But think about that. That means there were six cars pulled from other areas that weren't going to traffic issues or other complaints and so on and so forth. So that's a concern to mind. But I do wanna thank Bard. They took it seriously, and we're starting to, you know, get back on track with that. So I wanted to say that. Also, I wanted to thank the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts from the Red Hook area. And we had our Veterans Day ceremony here on Veterans Day at Monument Hill. My thanks to Trustee Schneider and Bruno, our clerk and deputy clerk, were there. It was hosted by the American Legion Post, the Harold Smith Post, and both the Cub Scouts and Brownie troops were there. Are they brownies? There's something else. Tender hearts. They're tender hearts. And it was really a nice ceremony. We got the kids involved with the ceremony, and then we had hot dogs and cokes next door at the Legion. So it was a really nice ceremony, and my thanks to those who came out. The next village board meeting will be December seventeenth at seven o'clock here at Village Hall. There'll be a workshop in the mayor's office at six, regular workshop on December tenth at six PM. Committee report. Stephanie Merrifield.
Thank you. I just wanna add to the, some of the late night problems that we've seen this semester, which, yes, deeply disappointing considering the progress made last year. One of the things said in the response to this village was, young people are gonna do what young people are gonna do. I can't say I disagree with that. But the next question is, where should they be doing that? Should they be doing that in a tiny residential village of a thousand souls at midnight? Or should they be doing it on a six-hundred-acre college campus? That's all I wanna say about that. Water report. We had a water main break at thirty-eight Woods Road on October seventeenth. Excuse me, Clerk Kinnell. This is for the month of October, twenty fourteen. There was a leak in the four P well transmission line after the meter. I think that just indicates where the leak was in relation to the meter, October twenty-first. And water mains were flushed on October twenty-first, twenty-third, twenty-eighth, and thirtieth. And as every month, two samples are taken from random areas in the water system. In the month of October, it was on Broadway and another on Spring Street. And these samples are taken to look for microbiological entities that we don't want to find, and we did not find any of those. Always good news. Tivoli Community Garden, we are signing up for next spring, so as it starts to get cold, you can think ahead to warmth. And I saw we've already gotten one checked. So the way it works, if you're interested in a plot, you can contact tivolicommitingarden@gmail.com. You can also basically run into myself or our garden coordinators, Danielle Ryu and Mara Ranville. It's thirty dollars for the season. You get an eight-by-twelve foot plot. This will be going into our fourth season. I think last year was our best yet. And as these fees that come in, last year we were able to build raised beds, handsome, thick, white oak beds that will last a long time for half the garden. And so the idea is probably this coming season, we can make raised beds for the rest of the garden. So it's a lot of fun. Think about sharing a plot with someone. tivolicommitingarden@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Brenna?
Okay, just a couple of quick things. Going back to that Halloween date, we had a lovely crowd before, the very huge crowd.
Your crowd was much more behaved.
Yes, and they were much younger. My thanks to the library for sort of, you know, co-sponsoring an event for the kids with the Lego Halloween of castles, costumes, and candy. And just a second, Mayor Karana's comment about the ceremony on Monument Hill. It really is always a pleasure to attend that ceremony and to be involved with these gentlemen who served, and then to honor those that presently are, but not to mention those that have lost their lives in the service of our country. And it was a lovely ceremony, and it's always nice to sort of chit-chat with them all back at the Legion and get them all on a personal basis. That's it.
Trustee Schneider. Thank you, Trustee Brenna.
I'm gonna go ahead and put my two cents in about the Veterans Day service as well. Both of my boys are in the PAC forty-two Cub Scouts that were in attendance there. And it was a really fantastic opportunity for us to introduce that concept of integrity and service to your community and your country. So I really appreciate the opportunity. I know that my boys had a great time. So it was nice. It kind of puts you back in touch with the folks right in your local community. As far as the village court charge volume summary report for October, we received a total of two charges, and there was a total of twenty-two charges that were disposed. Money collected and remitted to the state comptroller totaled eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. I would like to talk really briefly about the Tivoli Business and Artists Alliance. We have begun meeting on a monthly basis, and I am thrilled with the response from our local merchants. I am super excited to see several faces here in the audience tonight as well. And I really have some high hopes for collaborative efforts between the village and the merchants to make the community, the business community, a hub. I think that will begin attracting more visitors and increasing the success of the community through the business, business citizens, if you will. We just had a meeting this past Monday, and just to give you an idea of some of the topics of conversation that we addressed there in our open forum. At our meeting in October, we had some feedback in regard to the aesthetics of the village. So Rob and Bruno kindly attended on Monday and went over some of the statuses, updates on various points in the village. We talked about opportunities for businesses to be involved with upgrading the aesthetics in the community, challenges such as zoning. You know, we all, as residents, have very specific opinions on that. But our business members have opinions as well, and their feedback is key to resolving it to everyone's satisfaction. We talked about other opportunities through the Greenway Grant or the Green Committee. We did discuss the zoning review committee. As you know, some of our codes are definitely outdated. So we do have a committee of dedicated folks who are addressing those piece by piece, going through and making sure that our codes are updated and that those changes come to pass. So I think that business member participation in that committee is also key, and that's only going to strengthen our codes. We did also talk about the village website and how we might be able to update that, upgrade that, and ways to pull in opportunities for the merchants in the area in regard to that as well. Signage on nine G came up. I know that we've had some feedback from the state in regard to the type of signage that's allowed on nine G.
It's more of a directive, that communication.
All right, fine, a directive.
The sign has to come down. The nine G signs that have Tivoli and the businesses on there have to come down. They were put up, I kinda did some research. They were put up, and then I think the village asked the state. But since we've been focused on improving visibility, we've been focused on improving visibility at the intersection. It just goes hand in hand. So those signs have to come down, and we will work with the state DOT to redesign those signs, bring them down, make them smaller, and probably have it read Tivoli Business District or something underneath.
No, that's okay. You're stealing my thunder. It's all good. Actually, we have so many creative minds in this village that, you know, it's a really, and I keep saying opportunity, but it really is. It's a really great opportunity to get some of the folks who are impacted the most, our business owners, in on that revision process. So it's really, if it's gotta come down, it's ideal timing. So, let's see. We discussed historical signage going up in regard to various areas of interest throughout the village and working with Greg Moynahan to identify those and then mark them, so that, you know, our village is a very walkable village. So we wanna just continue to contribute to that environment. We discussed coordinating efforts to come up with a community event that would highlight our area businesses and bring more visitors to Tivoli. That being said, I know that there are several businesses that will be open during our Winter Fest on December thirteenth. Please, residents, look for a letter going out. I hope to be able to highlight some of the attractions that will be available throughout the village. And I am also going to tell everyone to check out our local businesses. If you don't visit them regularly, you should take the time to check it out, see what's going on. We have a thriving community here, and we have a lot of very vested, really wonderful merchants here. So we should do our best to support them, and they in turn do support our community. So I can tell you a few things going on. Panzer Restaurant, I know, has begun offering a family-style buffet on Wednesday nights, a little bit different from their typical menu. And I know that Ray's been really working hard to make it very appealing to our local residents here on Wednesday night. I know that Tangent Theater has been coordinating with the Todd Haven to do readings right there in the pub. So go on and check out the merchants that are here in the village, and it's got some interesting things going on. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to steal your thunder.
It's all good.
Oh, there we go.
It was a fun night. There was an item that I don't believe I addressed with the board. In two thousand and nine, when the state comptroller came in and reviewed the village finances, they noted that there were several accounts that needed to have monies paid back from time to time. Prior to me becoming mayor, the village had borrowed, had allowed certain lines to borrow from each other. You can't really, well, you're allowed to do it. You're allowed to do it really once. In two thousand and eleven, the village did repay some of those lines, but we did not have enough funding at the time to repay all of the lines that are due. This is simply called a due to and a due from. It's regarding our general account, our water account, our sewer fund. From time to time, certain funds don't have enough funding in them. Things come up, so you have to borrow from other lines. Things come up, so you have to borrow from other lines. But when you borrow from other lines, the state comptroller says you have to pay those back. We now, thanks to our finances, we were able to base some of those lines back. The amount of money that we're paying back is fifty thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. This is something we did in two thousand and eleven. We haven't been able to do it up until now because our finances haven't been that strong up until this point. So at this point, I would approve a motion from the village board to approve the due to's and due froms. This was identified by our village bookkeeper in concert with our village treasurer. But I would note to you, these go back prior to Linda Ginnell becoming our treasurer, prior to me becoming mayor. This goes back to two thousand and eight, Linda, if I'm not?
Prior to two thousand and eight, it was cited in the audit.
Right.
Yeah, that audit covered June first, oh six, to May first, oh eight.
And the village is now in a, in a spot where we can start repaying those lines due to some budgeting changes that we've made within the village over the last three years. So at this point, entertain, entertain a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Motion's been made by the deputy mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, a second. Linda, do you want to add anything in regards to the due to, due from? No? If there's nothing further, roll call vote. Deputy Mayor Griffith?
Aye.
Trustee Bruno?
Aye.
Trustee Schneider?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And as usual, all of our treasures reports, every month, we post them online, so you can actually see every month, something we started a few years ago. Every month, you can go on and see every bill that we're paying, how much we're paying, and where it's coming from. This, do we do community reports? We did community reports, thank you. It's been one of those nights. At this point, I open up the floor for a public comment and anything you want to talk about.
I want to talk about shirts now.
Leslie?
No, I actually do have one quick thing.
You beat you to it.
I don't, I don't really have any solid suggestions other than increased or more random police patrols, but the graffiti sort of outbursts on Montgomery Street, I don't know if they've been occurring in other places.
Not that, sorry.
They've been pretty heavy on Montgomery Street, mostly the night before Halloween, which is when you would expect it. But over the weekend, somebody spray painted a rather obscene racist comment on the phone pole across the street from my house where my daughter gets on the school bus, and she's just learning how to read and spell, which made for an awkward conversation while waiting for the bus. I have one suggestion that I should say off camera, but I don't know, no, it's actually legitimate, like it doesn't involve firearms. But I mean, more random police patrols, I think, late at night. I, I don't, it's needle in a haystack, but.
We're, we had a conversation in the workshop about changing some of the patrols around to address that issue with other issues as well, Peter. Leslie? Oh, I'll come back to, go ahead, Leslie.
Okay. No, in September, you were not here at the meeting, but we had a conversation about another way of trying to keep Tivoli nice appearance-wise, and we had talked about how we've noticed that there's more items that people may want to get rid of but can't get rid of in garbage pickup, and that we were exploring just different ways of offering bigger items to be picked up that people may want to get rid of that are, they're being stored, you know, along fence lines, behind sheds, on the side of garages, and just providing residents a way of getting rid of large items. And Joel, I know you were going to research that.
Yeah, I mean, in the past, there has been like an annual solid, you know, large object pickup day, I mean, in the deep past, I would say. You know, whether, we would have to look at our budget and what it costs to, to do that. I mean, I wonder if a single day a year is enough? I mean, it would certainly help, but then that person says, okay, I'm going to keep that giant thing I don't want for the next six months, I want to throw it out today. I mean, I don't know, I'm as interested in hearing from you, like what you think is needed. I mean, we talked about having a dumpster people could bring stuff maybe over a window of time rather than a single day or weekend or something. I don't know, do those sorts of things sound like they would make a difference?
Well, that's what I thought you, when we talked in September, I thought you were going to look into it, talk with your board and see if there were options, if there was money to provide some kind of a pickup, a truck going around, or, you know, people put it out and haul, get it hauled off. If people choose to put it out, I don't know, you know, one's, one man's junk is another man's treasure.
Let me see that.
Yeah. I don't think we've gotten the details that we would need to have to figure that out yet, but I mean, we've been talking about it, but I guess that's part of what led us to some of our larger, big picture zoning questions we're having right now, so.
So, okay.
Let me go to Tommy, and then I'll come to Peter.
You might as well get him, because I got a few items here.
Peter, go ahead.
On a related note, this probably totally isn't your purview at all to, to deal with this, but Red Hook used to, in conjunction with Duchess County, used to have an electronics and toxic waste.
We're setting that up. I didn't mean to cut, yeah.
We have no way to do that except for, you know, one or two days a year in Poughkeepsie.
We're trying to do it in concert with Bard. It's funny, Mayor Blundell from the village of Red Hook and I talked about doing, setting that up this week, we use Bard, Red Hook, and Tivoli.
Fantastic.
Yep. Tom.
All right, thanks, Tony. Just want to touch a few things about the firehouse and what's going on.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. First, the sign letters, you won't hear at the last meeting, but letters on the firehouse were destroyed and stuff, and I was able to go to Duchess Signs, talk to Dave over there. He got his replacement letters, they asked for the bill, and he said, no charge.
Oh, that was nice of him.
So we'll have the letters put up till they get a couple, three minutes.
He's a good guy.
Yeah.
It's Red Hook signs, by the way, Dave.
Yeah. The other thing is, we put in, before we hit the enter key, I want to let you know that we're putting in for a grant for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for turnout gear again, and included in the turnout gear will be bailout system, which is required by law for us to have. So hopefully, we get it this time, so it'll take a little bit of a burn off of that, you know, what we were talking about doing later on down the road there. So before we hit the enter key, I just want you guys to be aware that we are sending it in, and there will be about, if we get the grant, it's like about sixty-five hundred dollars that, that we have to pay towards it.
How much?
Sixty-five hundred. Six thousand five hundred.
Yeah, okay.
Towards it. I mean, that's if we get the grant, that's, that's what, our five percent is what we have to pay to get that grant.
But who's going to pay that?
The, we are.
Okay.
Okay, we are.
Only because you don't have it, that's why, I just.
Well, no, no, but he can have it from next year anyway, so he can put it in the budget.
All right, was it, no, I'm just, I'm just talking about budget-wise, that, I thought you had to pay now.
One more, you have to pay. So you pay sixty-five hundred or pay a hundred and thirty-five thousand, take your choice.
Either one, I don't.
Yeah, I know.
Neither do you.
Okay. No. Well, we got sixty-five hundred. We need the project. Next item is for Winter Fest. Firehouse is going to be giving out the chocolate calendars for the, for the kids.
Oh, nice.
So that, you know, when the kids come there, we're about to pick an age range up to what, but they're going to be given, Santa's going to give them the calendars, so they can count down for Christmas there. Next issue would be the, going out of here on, on Broadway, over that bridge, you got to get the county or somebody to pave that or do something, because every time we go out with the fire truck, we smack our heads on top of the, the hoods inside the, the truck. We got to get that fixed.
The bridge is slated for repair probably two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, we're, we're two fourteen.
No, I know that, but, no, I understand that. But the other issue that, we've applied for a community development block grant to Duchess County for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the water line from nine G West straight up to the bridge. So we've talked to the county about that. So they're going to try to work out timing-wise, because they're aware of it, but the problem is they're not going to start paving, doing repairs to the bridge, to a bridge that they're going to tear up, so, but patchwork is a different story, so.
Let us patch it and make it smooth, so we don't hit the topper heads and go out of the, out of the thing. Because guys are putting packs on them when they're going out.
No, I know.
And they get thrown all over the place.
It's, 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 and that's not our road to do, that's a county road.
Right.
So we have to ask the county to do that, but I will set myself a little.
And I think, as I had said last month, I think this came up when, when Brian was absent and I was chairing the meeting, you know, you're all citizens of the county too, and, you know, we, we may bark to the county, and, and maybe if you wanted to do that as well, that might help your county representatives get to work on this road through our village.
So, one more, a one more, a couple more things, but the light at nine G?
Yeah.
That thing is causing more of a headache.
Oh, God, Tommy!
The air is going away. We come up there with the, we get up there with the trucks, nobody even stops us, they just, yeah, I, today we went to a structural fire, and I'm waiting for cars to keep, they just keep on going, nobody stops.
Yeah, but they weren't going to stop if there wasn't a light there anyway.
We're looking for.
Right.
Yeah, one of the things may, may have to look into if there's a way to control that light, so we can turn it, turn it red, so that they stop.
We'll have to talk to the D O T.
Yeah.
I understand, because there's certain, you can't do that.
Yeah. Also, I was, when I was at C, when I was at the hearing here in C, in Red Hook for CBS, there was a guy that was doing, they're going to be doing a major road project up here, he said, between Tivoli and somewhere. You know anything about that?
Yeah, they're still working on details. I spoke with Mark DeBald from Duchess County Department of Planning. There is a major improvement project that's going to be taking place, they're still trying to work out all the details. I don't have any dates or any specifics on that, but I, I've been invited to a meeting once they do, and I'll share that with you guys, obviously, because you'll need to know about access and.
Yeah, he had mentioned he was going to invite the fire departments and police departments and everything.
Yeah, yeah, it would probably be me, you, Mark, and whoever else.
All right. And one quick one.
Yes.
Sign across the street, outside the firehouse, we actually asked the meeting to have those signs replaced, where it says no parking between this sign and that sign, and the old sign's still there.
Which one are you talking about?
Right across from the firehouse, because we can't back the trucks in if everybody's parking there.
It's one of the smaller signs, there's no parking.
Yeah, there's no parking, can't.
But that, that one.
It's made in a way, so we need to get back.
We got the approval to have it striped, actually.
Okay.
We got the approval to have it striped, and I had a conversation with, real quick after the meeting, because they, Department of Planning needs to talk to somebody from, I'll give them your number if you want. They need to come up to see how far you want to go with it.
Yeah.
So after the meeting, they're going to come up and, they just want to look at it, and we'll stripe it.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Other than that?
Any other further comments?
Now, I want to follow up a little bit, because I see your disappointment, and I'm feeling like I didn't get my homework done. But I, I'm seriously asking, you know, what, what form of service, and this is for everyone to help us come up with the right answer, what form of service makes sense in terms of dealing with these larger objects that get left out? I mean, should we see, I mean, because it's a little tricky for me to go get certain numbers if I don't know exactly what kind of animal I'm trying to create. So if it's a matter of, you know, imagining one thing, the village, D P W picks up the thing when they see it, and that would be a sort of an ongoing service, you know? Or is there a, a weekend once a year with a dumpster here, and people bring it? I mean, what do you all think about? What kind of animal are we trying to make that would be most helpful and affordable?
Would, would you have to do sort of a tag system if you had the D P W guys picking it up, because?
A higher value tag? Because if you can get it to the dumpster, you can get it to dump. Well, that's what we were saying, that some people may not have a way of doing that, getting it there.
If you've just got a little sedan, and you don't have the minivan, and you can't move your giant lazy boy.
That's why you have a minivan.
That's right.
So if you had the.
I have picked up some stuff myself, that wasn't mine, but, I mean.
I know where, where, where I grew up in McGrange, they had, they actually called it a, a junk day. And they sent out notifications, and you put what you didn't want at the end of your driveway, and a truck came by, and people who could lift these things and put them in the truck, and I don't know where it went, but it was gone.
Right, so that was a, an annual?
It was an annual thing, but you could do it more often than that, but that was one way of, that's how we did it, that's how it was done where I grew up.
And that's how it used to happen.
That's what you used to do years ago, but you had to bring it up to the dump.
But that, then it became costly.
And that, but, you know, that, that was the thing. You might want to coordinate it with the student semester change, because they're always throwing crap out at that point.
So if someone, you know, you also want people, hey, I don't even have to pay, you know, when I take my junk over to Ulster County Resource Recovery and I pay by the ton for the.
So you can make like a twenty dollar garbage sticker, and people buy that and stick it on their couch.
Because you wouldn't want someone to say, hey, I actually don't have to do that anymore, I just put it out, and Tivoli keeps picking it up, and, you know, how do we make the users pay that service?
We can, you know what, we can look at what other municipalities do, you know, we can try to pick up from what others are doing, because we've all got it, we've all got stuff in our basement, in our attic, and behind our sheds, so.
And our neighbors do too, they're looking at it, right?
Yeah, and that would be, that'd be nice to clean up.
But this, this links in with the zoning enforcement issues, so.
Exactly.
It all comes back to that, doesn't it?
Yeah, but, so, so, yeah, it cost me to put a minimum price twenty-eight dollars to bring my pickup truck down to the, the dump. So, you know, double mattress is twenty bucks, you know? So, yeah, and we have three guys that said, oh, we.
We have three, yeah.
So, you know, I mean, they're already there.
But there's, they go with the, the whole truck, they get just tired.